I'd ask for most to reconvene into open session.
So moved.
It's moved and?
Move to reconvene.
I'm sorry, we'll move second.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Moved and are you seconded?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Any issues with the order of business tonight? Do we move anything around? Okay, public appearances. We have one public appearance, Pete Kornis.
Good evening. Last Tuesday at a school district meeting at Nichols, Jared said that the school district has the ninth highest mill rate in Wisconsin. That would be out of 422 school districts. That would put Cottage Grove and Manona in the top 2%. Not the top 2% of ACT scores or National Merit finalists, but the top 2% in Wisconsin in taxes. That is not a destination that we want. This ninth highest mill rate in Wisconsin is before the district goes to referendum to build a fourth school in 27 years. While I would prefer 10 classrooms per grade, I will support the $35 million for the new school and the 41% of the $57 million referendum that's for other things. I would prefer an amount greater than $57 million, but I understand many of you believe the $57 million at the 62% approval is the safest bet. But keep in mind that if the $57 million is approved in November of '18 and if you try to go back to the already ninth highest well within 10 years for yet some more money, my sense is that it will be overwhelmingly rejected and an open fissure in this district will open. Not the often discussed, but hopefully nonexistent fissure between Manona and Cottage Grove, but between parents who sometimes believe that money creates results and non-parents who have seen the rodeo for decades. On the July 11th meeting's handout entitled "Cost and Option Summary", which provided some details on the $57 million proposal, 14.8% or 26% was for capital maintenance high priority. This was one line, one line only, without any detail. 14.8 million. A previous capital maintenance amount on one of the school district handouts was 16.4. I understand you want to get to $57 million, but what is the detail of the 14.8? Was the 14.8 quote "high priority" double sourced by outside professionals from two companies? We all have quote "high priorities" in our own lives. Somebody might want a new car every three years. Somebody else might want a new bathroom or kitchen every 10 years. But we have to make choices. Sometimes, for example, a roof or a portion of a roof line. And I understand economies of scale of school buildings last longer than the initial useful life. Can we move some money that is now in the 14.8 million column to other areas and stay at your $57 million number? At Glacial Drummond, you're still, in my view, trying to put lipstick on a pig. The cost and operation summary says quote "removal of stage at cafeteria, subsequent wall infill etch in." Does an American, A, the stage. Does an American middle school built in the 21st century need a stage? In my view, yes, for fine arts classes so that sixth, seventh, and eighth graders can get some experience insights into acting beyond fifth and sixth grade. Should the stage, as small as it is, be kept as is? B, cafeteria seating. Right now, the stage has cafeteria tables and chairs. Removing the steps will add only a small number of additional seats. Not enough. I thought perhaps incorrectly that there was a consensus or certainly movement at a June meeting that the best solution to quote "the glacial lunches at 10:30 mess" was to pour some concrete pad, move the existing window wall out, and one, add seating. Two, increase the number of serving lines from two to four. And three, if necessary, add food preparation space.
Pete, could you wrap up, please?
Yeah, if we spend $13 million, that's 2.6 million times five years, and $57 million, that's 70 million, and Glacial Drummond is still a lunch mess, there's going to be consequences, not only to the elected people, but to some good and decent people who are here in this building from nine to five. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. I'd like motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
Okay, so this was added just this afternoon, the written reports. I will read it aloud, but before I read those recognitions, I'd like to bring your attention to one of the gifts that were just approved. Substantial amount, 39,900, approximately 39,900, from Cottage Grove PTO to Taylor Prairie School for a new playground. If recall, the Cottage Grove PTO did a similar substantial fundraiser for Cottage Grove School a year or two ago. And just a little bit of detail about this particular playground is primarily to serve 4K students. So for our youngest students to replace and add additional swings. So some additional tent pieces of new playground equipment such as climbing block spinners and, is this correct? Dooms for students? Not sure what those are, but.
You know what?
Okay. I don't really guess what they're called. So anyway, very, very appreciative of the fundraising effort and the gift of the Cottage Grove PTO. We'll certainly be sure to thank them sincerely for that work, so.
Okay.
You come from a very refined background.
Okay, and then three additional recognitions. And I think I may have reported out on this in previous years, but to remind you, there is a program called Bridging Brighter Smiles. Completely at no cost to the district. They provide dental service for our students who may not have access, you know, on their own. And this past year, they served nearly 120 students, over 500 cleanest and treatments for the district. And so we are just thrilled to have them as a partner. Our principals have all reported about how well that has worked and they come right into the schools. They bring portable equipment in with them and, you know, so it's really, it's non-intrusive and just one of those really, I'll say, awesome programs. They were so fortunate to have with us. I don't know, you know, exactly how many school districts they work with around the state. It's a substantial number, but again, they've been with us now for several years, so.
Did you mention the part about figuring no cost?
Yeah, so. I think I may have, but let's emphasize and say again, it's worth repeating. There is no cost to the district or to the parents at all, so. Secondly, and some of you may very well be aware of this, but one of our graduates, Levi Beckett, had quite an accomplishment. He was a 2016 graduate in Manona Grove High School and he is on the rowing team at Columbia University who recently won the national championship in the lightweight division. And so something very certainly proud of his accomplishment as he has participated. While he was here in high school, he was part of the Camp Randall Rowing Club in Madison. Okay, and then third, again, you're aware of this, but again, it deserves additional recognition publicly. We are thrilled that our MG21 did receive their charter school planning grant of over $500,000. And so that is to expand our current school into the middle school through grades six through eight. It is, the planning grant can be used over a five-year period. And so right now, the plan is to take this next year to, you know, continue that planning with the goal of having our first students in the 2019-20 school year, so.
Question down. What does the planning grant generally cover?
So a lot of it's professional development time, curriculum writing, planning, so paying for time. It also can substantially with equipment, desks, and so on, you know, any kind of furniture that might be utilized. The current, you all have been through MG21, you know, many times, and it's pretty impressive, some of the equipment they have. Most of that was purchased through a previous DPI planning grant. So that's a real important piece of it. And we're going to talk a little bit more about this later this evening on our facilities planning. But we believe that some even renovations to the building can be covered under the planning grant as well. So that's the initial report. Rebecca wrote it into the grant and we certainly need to confirm that, but that is another huge benefit if we're able to utilize, you know, some of the funds towards that as well. So it'll certainly all be, you know, put to good use.
Okay. Correspondents' announcements. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so you have attached written report with regard to summer school. Memo prepared by Lisa Hype. This is a very, you get an annual report generally that talks about our programs. I think Lisa did a really nice job of putting this summary together. And so I won't repeat what's in the written report, but just take any questions that you may have.
Could you just hit the highlights? Just because we're doing this on TV and I, the request for the report actually, there was a request from several parents who just wanted to know more about the program and what we offer. Just straight up numbers briefly, like how many students and how many programs and.
Sure. So, great question. And so, you know, we serviced nearly 1,200 students that participated in our summer programs. And you'll see in the report, we have statistics for the last three years. So we've, you know, we've seen quite of, or at that point, you know, quite an increase. We've kind of stabilized these last couple of years. There is a slight dip, particularly at the high school this past year, and that was only because of, we previously counted students in our summer conditioning program as part of the summer school program. That program has expanded, but it's not a part of the summer school. It goes beyond the scope of the summer school program, so those students aren't counted in there. But it's not, it's actually a greater opportunity for students. And that's highlighted in the report as well. But the other, I think, key thing that you should be aware of that give a lot of credit to Jared as well as the rest of staff, Lisa and the staff, putting together transportation planning. Only a few years ago, we had virtually no, you know, transportation for our summer school. And then we started slowly by trying to find some of our neediest students. We didn't want that to be a barrier for them to participate. And then as we started it, we saw more and more of a need and so we really have quite an expansive transportation system now that we believe that, again, the goal is to not, to remove barriers so that all students can have access. And so I think that's probably, besides the program itself, another really important thing that should be aware of.
So Dan, the report basically says that there were 31 offerings for elementary students and 17 for middle school students. And then it says MGHS students focus primarily on credit recovery courses and the ACT prep. So does that mean it's only remedial that we're on? What does that mean?
So at the high school, of course, everything is for credit, where it's not the case, you know, at elementary and middle school. And so credit recovery has always been an important part of summer school. Now the ACT prep, I just misspoke, I said everything. Well, the ACT prep course is not for credit. So those would be considered kind of the enrichment, you know, opportunities that we have for students.
I guess I'm still not understanding how many classes we offer at the high school and what kind of programming we have.
Okay. I think in all the core areas, there are opportunities for students to have credit recovery and.
Okay, but we don't offer any AP or any.
Correct.
Okay, it's only credit recovery?
As far as for credit courses, yes.
Okay, and the thought about that is what?
That that's an opportunity for students who are deficient in credits to have that up.
What about the kids who want?
If I, well, one point, you couldn't offer an AP class during the, like, the time period for something, it's just not possible.
So is there a time period?
So it would be more, if you wanted, I know one of the things we had talked about way back when, we approved that financial literacy one. That's the only one I thought, because I had mixed feelings about whether I thought it should be mandatory or not and it takes up students' slots for taking other classes. So I thought at some point, if there'd be a way to make that course, a course like that, or there might be some courses you could fit into summer school, but in general, it's difficult to fit a high school course into that timeframe, I think.
Yeah, they require a number of hours and so that's one of the challenges, you know, to get in. But as you mentioned, yeah, AP is just an outsider. You have to take the exams in May. You know, and I think there's been discussion about, and there's, you know, the idea of having elective, you know, courses that are offered, you know, during the regular school year. The reality is with our block scheduling, you know, the majority of students have, end up graduating with way more credits than are required for graduation, so they don't need it in order to earn credits for graduation. The only issue, as Susan mentioned, once in a while, you have students that want to take so many courses, you know, that might want to get something out of the way. But I think that's one of the things too, is we've expanded the number of AP courses. There's also more opportunity, they don't have to wait till their senior year. We'd see more and more juniors and, you know, underclassmen, you know, so they don't have to cram all into that top three year.
My question was about, so expand, with the conditioning program being treated separately now, which I think sounds like a good idea for study for students, how does that affect counting? Can we count those kids for funding now or no? Because they're not part of summer school, so they can't, so it's a separate, okay. That's just, that's what I assumed, but.
And let's be clear on the funding. So the program does pay for itself, okay?
Yeah. Okay. Next, we've got Director Business Services' report.
All right, annually, the Department of Public Instruction releases their July 1st Equalization Aid estimates. Just want to make sure everybody is clear, this is an estimate. We all are going through our audits as we speak. Once all the final numbers are submitted to the Department of Public Instruction, they will put it through the formula and give us our final numbers on October 15th. If you recall, at the June 27th board meeting, I had used what we had currently been receiving for equalization aid. The estimate comes out with us receiving an additional $398,000. So going from $12,952,549 to an estimated $13,350,806. This money does not give the district additional funds to put into our classrooms or our general fund. What it does is equalization aid allows for property tax relief. So based on the revenue limit, we are being able to potentially decrease our mill rates and what we levy to our property taxpayers. Like I said, this will most likely change. It's just an estimate based on the numbers that were reported to DPI over the course of the year, but the final numbers do not come out until October 15th.
Questions? What, to this point, have you been using as an estimate?
The same item, so the $12,952, so.
So that's.
So approximately a 3% increase in equalization aid from last year.
And it would represent a couple of percent, one and a half to 2% reduction in mill rates?
Yeah, so I think we were looking at a mill rate approximately 1322 would probably bring us down to about 1305.
Okay.
Jared, in the past, has the aid estimate from state changed much from what it came up with?
It does fluctuate. Sometimes we've seen an increase and sometimes we've seen it's decrease. I don't want to say it's going to dramatically swing where we'll say we went from 12.9 to less. I mean, we'll definitely receive an increase, probably not that 3%, probably closer to, you know, 1.5 to 2%. So it varies by one, one and a half percent.
But it's unlikely to decrease below that.
Correct.
Okay. Next, moving on, the Personnel Committee report.
Susan, did you pass those around? Pass around my written report for you.
Thank you, Dean.
The Personnel Committee met with the Manona Grove Education Association in a bargaining session to bargain the 2.13 CPI of the amount of money that yielded was $214,000 plus. Both the committee and MGA quickly agreed to distribute that amount as $1,092 per full-time equivalent. Then the committee met in a meet and confer session to discuss the supplemental distribution of $57,466.51. The committee recommended that they were teachers, teachers that move from level one to level two and from level two to level three, that we allocated those funds as allotted in the teacher compensation plan to those teachers. It's not per teacher, but for the number of teachers we have. The committee also recommended that teachers earning the master's degree be awarded the $4,000 per teacher as the teacher compensation plan. The committee also recommended that $26,000 be awarded to 13 teachers who moved from level three to level four. And the amount for the movement from level one to two, two to three, and three to four totaled $39,000. So the remaining balance of the budgeted allotment of $18,000 plus was, and it was distributed per FTE as well. During the meet and confer session, MGA also addressed concerns about the teacher compensation plan itself, with their main concern being that the teacher compensation plan does not allow teachers to envision or predict their income in future years. The committee agreed to review the teacher's compensation plan in a forthcoming session, not only on that issue, but any other ones that may come up. The committee has two meetings scheduled, August 6th at 11 o'clock and August 14th at 1:00. Any questions?
I see why you wrote it down.
What?
I see why you wrote it down, all the different, all the numbers.
If not, I'd have to explain it two or three times.
The, actually, I do have a question, which is the master's, the $4,000 for the master's degrees on the teacher compensation plan, is that the current plan or is that a different number?
What?
The $4,000 for the masters.
That's the current plan.
That is the current, okay, that has not changed.
It's actually $2,000.
That's what I thought. That's an increase over the prior plan, right?
It's, there was two individuals that received masters and that's what this.
Oh, so that was total.
Oh, I got it. Got it, okay, I understand.
That sentence was screwed up.
No, it's perfectly clear, it's just I misread it.
You're not supposed to ask me tough questions like that. Jared, thanks for bailing me out, anytime.
Any other questions for Dean? Policy Committee report, Susan.
Okay, Policy Committee yesterday, and we reviewed the Boardman Clark Bylaw Policy and administrative guideline review, again, decided we would basically keep that document because it goes through a lot of different policies and talks about where the board has certain responsibilities, superintendent, director of instruction, the principals, et cetera. And we decided we'd keep it for future review pending more administrative recommendations and maybe as they come up, but if there's some that need attention right away, they would come that way to us. We also talked about the fact that some other districts have created educational equity policies and committee members agreed and then had suggested that we might want to look at this and we agreed that would be beneficial for MG. Our staff members have developed a list of equity non-negotiables which would be incorporated into a new policy. And Superintendent also will follow up on this and a couple other policies and will bring recommendations to the committee at a future meeting. Additionally, he's been working with Jeff Schreiner and Brandon Elsberg Beckworth on a policy regarding sponsorships for athletic and other facilities and there may be a draft. We've talked about this for a long time and our policy now doesn't prohibit it, but it would be nice to have it outlined in our policy. So that's something that we'll be looking at in the future. Our next meeting is August 21st at 9:00 AM.
Questions for Susan?
Susan, what is the, when you talk about the inequity policy, do you have an idea of what it might look like?
Yeah, it's defining, pull that out. It's defining what some of the non-negotiables are and, let's see if I can. It deals with things like, well, stating that we have a commitment to equity in policy. So currently, we adopted a statement supporting equity in our district. It's in our vision, mission, everything else, but we don't really have a policy per se that is, but it was more promoted proactively, making statements perhaps such as that board decisions will be guided by the commitment of promoting just and fair inclusion, et cetera. Things like school-based programs, opportunity being approached through the lens of targeted universalism where they're accessible to all students, but resources can be targeted to students who exhibit particular needs. Our Manona Grove statements that our staff has come up with deal with the fact that all employees share responsibility for prevention of student failure. Principles of natural proportions will be used to support the mirrored demographic of students in all educational environments, so it was that will be heterogeneously grouping, all learners participate in high core instruction, differentiation, aligning educators with a range of expertise to increase each other's capacity, personalized performance profiles for all students, et cetera. So kind of defining where what that is and these are just, and some of those thoughts would be put into this. Madison has one, LaFrost has one, and there was a Policy Perspectives article on it in May, which if you wanted to bring that up from, and I had thought if we do bring this policy forward, we bring these resources where you agree, but if you want to look at it in addition, we do have a subscription to the WSD Policy Resource Guide, so you can go online and you can find this Policy Perspectives, May 2018. We get hard copies of this, too, we're like nearly.
And I pulled any documents.
Document we did post.
Those documents were posted with the Personnel Committee, I'm sorry, the Policy Committee.
Policy Committee, so that'd be an easier way to find it, yeah.
They were posted on the board doc.
Yeah, if you go to the content of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
And those three documents, the MEQ one, the.
Yeah, MEQ one. The Policy Perspective talks a lot about Madison and some of LaFrost's policies.
And those are, they're in the public section, right?
No.
So they're not?
They're not.
They're a draft, so.
I could actually email you that.
Oh, that's okay, there's a reason I should.
I think, because like MEQ pieces, I think, I thought they were in the public section, so.
Are they in the public section?
I think so. I think so, on the Personnel Committee. I mean, they're other people's documents for the most part.
There's three documents under that one and it was the MEQ one, the Manona Grove Equity Non-Negotiables and.
They are, they are not posted in the board document.
They're not?
They could have, that's.
But board members can find them anyway, so you guys can see them anyway, so it's fine. If they could have, yeah.
Yeah, we normally by default put our drafts in the ministry and I think.
Are you, did you come in through the board, through the public board? Okay, so that's interesting. Because Eric's not seeing them, but I have them.
Yeah, he didn't authenticate.
He's not logged in that.
He's on your computer?
I am, could be logged in.
Yeah, he's logged in.
No, I am, because I can.
Yeah, momentarily, if you, when you go to the board docs, even if you're authenticated, if you click public site instead of, you'll get only what the public can see. You have to click, make the right click there on authenticate to see the board, your, thanks. Did you have? Any other questions for Susan? Okay, action items, Superintendent of Compensation for 2018-19. Like motion for approval is presented.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved to seconded discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Out of two, annual declaration of parent notice district student academic standards.
I believe this is the fourth year now. This is statutory requirement that annually the board can approve our academic standards and so the only slight change this past year was that the state had adopted the next generation science standards and we are recommending as well.
And we do have to read this?
Yeah, we have to. Susan, and there's two motions, separate.
They have to be done separately?
Yeah.
I move pursuant to Section 120.12, Part N13, Part NB of the state statutes to approve the list and description of the student academic standards in the areas of mathematics, science, reading and writing, geography and history that shall be in effect for the 2018-19 school year as said list has been presented in written form as attachment A with the date of July 18, 2018 and the board's packet of supplemental materials for this. of July 18, 2018, and the board's packet of supplemental materials for this meeting, and with said academic standards constituting the board adopted standards that are required under section 118.30, per N1G, per N A of the state statutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
They move to second of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Want to do the second one? Somebody has to read the second one.
I would say I'm doing it. I move to direct the administration to incorporate the board approved list and description of the student academic standards that shall be in effect for the 2018-19 school year into a notice for parents and guardians that the administration shall provide in a manner that is consistent with the requirements of section 120.12, per N13 of the state statutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
They move to second of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider yourself so directed, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Next is use of an expulsion hearing officer this 2018-19 school year.
This is an annual requirement. Our policy and the statutes allow the board to choose to use a hearing officer for expulsions. Traditionally, this board has chosen to do so, and if you want to continue that, you must annually adopt this resolution.
I'd like a motion for approval of the resolution to authorize appointment of an expulsion off, hearing officer for 2018-19 as presented.
I have a question. Does this assume we continue with the same one?
That has nothing to do with this motion, so if that's the, that would be a different discussion.
I'd like a motion.
I'll second.
You need it for making reference.
I'll make the motion then.
Okay. Now someone else can second it.
Second.
They move in second of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Facilities planning.
Okay, so this is noticed, discussion and consideration, so it's meant to be discussion, but should you feel the desire to make motion, consideration allows you to do that. Not recommending you adopt a resolution for referendum tonight. If you are able to get consensus, I would recommend that the next meeting at August 8th, that we would, you know, have that as a goal. So we have, you had a great discussion at the workshop the other evening, there are a few, couple things that board members requested some follow-up information on, and so you can determine how you want to go through these. I think it is important that you touch on kind of each one of those items, if not briefly or some to more extent tonight, to make sure again that you have all your questions answered before you get to the decision-making part. Also like to let you know that we have a number of experts here with us this evening that can help answer questions. Many of the folks that you've seen, you know, before, Michelle Weber from PMA is here, that can speak to the finances and any potential impact, and how that would work with regard to, you know, bonds for a potential referendum. And then also we have with us Julie Graham from Epstein UN Architects. Normally Bob Weigert has been with us to answer questions, he's not available, but Julie will be able to speak a little bit, specifically to the renovations piece, about how that process works with regard to those cost estimates and decision-making and design and so on. We also have John Tucker with us from Findorf, does a lot of work with the cost estimating as well, is with us, and then you've seen Kristen and Andy at many of our meetings, so you're well acquainted with them. We also have with us a number of our administrators, specifically with the athletics discussion, Jeff Schreiner's joining us tonight, can answer any questions on that piece, as well as of course our principals and other administrators. So whatever order you'd like to take them, and I think we can kind of go through each, and we do have some new information on some of those to present.
Considering the time that we would like to have, you know, perhaps have a recommendation for completed referendums, completed document, I'm sorry, proposal, at our next meeting, I would hope that we can go through this list and give an up or down to these items on here, so that the administration knows what they can prepare for us.
Yeah.
And then open discussion how we do that, I mean, I don't see a problem starting at the top, from the top. Susan?
I was under the impression at the workshop that we had kind of, because the board kind of agreed that it would be helpful to have an overview presentation about the current athletic facilities, so that all board members would understand where we're using what. I thought we were going to do that.
Was there a consensus to do so? Dean?
My understanding was we would have available information when that item, when that item came up.
Okay, because we don't have that, and.
Yes.
So for instance, we've had suggestions to consider different pieces of funding, and without the background piece, you know, I mean, so, does everybody know where we play football? Does everybody know where JV football plays? Does everybody know where freshman football plays? Does everybody know where soccer plays? Where girls softball plays? Do you know where these facilities are? Do you know how the people are transported? Do you know what the conditions are? Do you know whether or not we get bumped up those facilities? I think that's an important piece as we prioritize and look at costs, by understanding that it appears the building and the movements generally, and if you want to start there, that's fine.
Yeah, but.
But then we start going into what we call renovations, and, you know, again, how does that balance? I don't know.
Yes, right. Procedurally, I think we should break this down into pieces. When we get to a piece where we don't think we have enough information, we can defer that. And I think as part of that, we would defer the final amount total. I mean, you have the suggestion of 57 million, perhaps that would move up and down depending on the, upon the items that we provide, we decide on. Starting at the top, is it the consensus that we should pursue a facilities referendum to meet these, meet our needs coming up? And I would add to that, you know, in the timing, on the November 2018 ballot. Comments?
I believe we have, at least from the discussion the other night, we had a consensus on a referendum.
Right, and I think, and I just would like to confirm that, if we had a discussion, we couldn't really make a, come to, you know, a formal decision on that, and so I would like to make, confirm that, and my thought.
Understanding.
Yeah, and my thought, we can just jump, if there's a consensus, we can jump to this, all in favor of proceeding with November 2018 referendum? Show of hands. Susan? Susan's on the fence.
And so thank you about the timing, because I don't know what votes it's going to be included in the amount. So it's very difficult for me to make a decision about when I don't know what's in there.
Can I put you on, can we put you down for the ref, for a, pursuing a facilities referendum without timing? First item on here.
Well, I thought what we just discussed was, do you support going to referendum for a three, five school for 38 million?
Yep.
That's what you talked about. Now you're going back globally, and we don't have, so I'm not comfortable where you're going right now.
Fair enough. Moving down to the expand capacity with a new, new school.
Okay.
For 37 million dollars, is everybody on board for that?
Well, I'm on, that's, that's where we started with all this.
Up to, sorry, and I said, I should have said 30 to 33.5 million dollars.
I think, I think, I agree with that. I, I think that there are some specifications that which the facilities committee, as well as we, would need to have two or three vote points there. We were talking about how large that school would be, and I think in my judgment, we also need language in there, that the school, that the school would have a core that could be expanded. That would be my judgment.
Okay.
I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for interrupting. Am I making sense? I mean, I, I think there's, I think there's three or four vote points anyway that need to go with this, including the price and the idea of the, of a core facility that can be expanded in classrooms, and maybe some other specifics to.
Ultimately.
I just don't want to say build a school.
No, but ultimately, we would be approving the design of the school before it would be built, regardless of the referendum.
No, but we have, but Peter, we have dollar amounts on whether, whether we have capacity for, for X amount or Y amount, and I think we need to make some indication later on to be subject to change, but we need to make some indication of where we're headed. And then it seems to me as we put all these pieces in place, we're going to have to come back at the end and approve the whole package.
Yes, I think we'll have to add more details, and of course.
So everything is open until the end.
Yes, absolutely.
This cost and option summary has not been distributed yet, correct? Okay, I apologize, we probably should start with that. So we haven't updated a document.
Then one was posted.
It was just posted today, yeah.
I did.
Yeah.
I didn't see that one.
Yeah, so those were just posted this afternoon.
Does this address some of the points I?
Yeah.
That print's too small, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Dan, with the cost and options, which specifically, actually, why don't you go ahead?
So if you recall, all along, we've been given a range for a potential cost of the school, and so now that we've narrowed in and said with nine classrooms per grade, but expandable, so that means larger common areas, we have a more detailed cost estimate, so the number 33,500,000, okay, would be the cost for that type of school.
Is, is that satisfactory language for you, Dean?
Well, but.
Or?
Is this the, nine is not a number that I've been familiar with. Hasn't there been, wasn't this discussed in other types of terms?
Well, the very initial.
Nine sections, or eight sections, or 10 sections.
Right.
Okay. I know that the committee, we've all agreed upon that.
Right, we did have quite an extensive discussion at the workshop, but the FAC, the initial draft, when we looked at it, we looked at the design for a 10 section per grade. And then because of the cost, and also we took a closer look at the enrollment capacity, and we spoke to, you know, how large do we really want our elementary schools to be, we're recommending a nine section per grade, which would give a capacity based on our board policy of 612, and then expandable up to 700.
This was, you know, we did go into details, if you look at the information you have from the last, from the workshop, there's the information about the nine and how the recommendation.
I don't want to have too many, oh, five sessions of papers in front of me, but I think the, the language with ability to expand needs some specification, I think.
Okay.
We say classrooms, but in language like core, and what does that imply? Does that imply, does this imply gymnasium, auditoriums, so, what does it mean to have the ability to expand? We know we have the land, we can always add more classrooms, but I think the facility advisory committee had discussions about to make sure that offices and serving, luncheon serving and capability of that, I think that needs some, some specification as to, because, because I think the facilities committee, and it would be mine in any event, is that what I call the core, that it needs to have an expansion beyond the nine classrooms, because the intent was to have, I believe the facility committee, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they, to have it go to 12 or something like that.
What, well, the, the problem with 12 is then you end up with a school of 900 students, which there, I think there's some consensus that's too large for an elementary school.
Well, then, then let's talk, talk about it.
Yeah.
At the, I just, just, I mean, what the discussion was at the, during the, sorry, the workshop, was that start, make room for expansion for 10 to 10 with the ability to expand, or the, or the core capacity to be able to accommodate that, that expansion.
Yeah, so if you're called, Bob Weigert spoke to that at the workshop, and that was a concern that was expressed, you know, by board members, and we've all seen with some of our current buildings, we've talked about possible expansion, we said the problem is our core areas don't support it, not enough gym space, cafeteria space, and so on, and so that's, so I think he spoke to that, so Dean, I guess what I'm hearing say is you like to see that in writing.
Because I, I think there is understanding, at least some people who are on the committee and people I've heard in discussion, are we going to get into a situation to where, you know, that we don't have to build another school too? So I think we need to strike a balance between size of school and, and expansion or the initial construction, because we ought to, we ought to try to keep the initial construction at a more reasonable cost if possible, but to have it expandable, if not, let's make the decision contrary and persuade us to do so.
Susan?
I totally agree with that point. What we specifically talked about was being able to see what was expandable, and the reason, one of the main reasons for that is we built Taylor Prairie to expand it all. We built it for pods, we never did that. So there may be a reason for, but it's really important, and Andrew spoke very eloquently the other night about the need to have that as part of what you do, just to say, oh yeah, well, now it's 33.5, and you can expand it, that doesn't answer our questions. So for instance, at, at GDS, I mean, exactly Dean's point, and that is often you need, just exactly what you were saying, Dan, you need expansion if you're going to add a pod on to Taylor Prairie, and you have to look at the number of kids that are in there, and then you have to look at all the other additional needs that the kids are going to have in that building, it's not sufficient to just add a classroom. So I think we need clearer information if we're going to support a building with the ability to expand. If we're not, fine, but if we are, I would.
I just, I just want to clarify, you're not prepared to support tonight? You don't feel like you have enough information to support?
I support the building, but I want to see the information about the expansion.
Can I, can you clarify? So I think what I hear you say is you want verification, when we say ability to expand, you as a board member want to make sure that we really can expand?
You bet, and I want to know what.
Okay, and that, I think we're coming to, I think we can speak to that, that's in the design phase, and the oversight of that.
And what you can expand, is it a classroom? And then what do you do with the lunchroom, and what do you do with the gym space, and I mean, are you violating the barcode when you have eighth grade recognition? That's what I'm talking about.
Susan?
What I heard Bob say, I thought, at the last meeting, was that because the question came up of why is it so much more expensive to build it for 10 sections than nine, his response was because when we build it for nine, we will build those core areas for larger than nine. And by core areas, he identified the gym, the cafeteria, the hallways, the restrooms, that those areas would affect, and he said so, if you decide you want us to build a building for 10 sections, I'm going to tell you, we're going to enlarge those core areas also for more than.
That's right.
To make it still expandable. So he was saying that very clearly, I thought at the last meeting, that yes, that absolutely will be in the design, and so that his recommendation, I think, because of the money, because that gets obviously that much more expensive, you're not just adding, if we went from to 10 sections instead of nine, you're not just adding a few classrooms, what he said was the reason it's so expensive is because you're adding square footage to all of those core areas.
That's right, and I want to see.
So, so the point is, well, what you're asking is just to have documented that, okay, the recommended square footage for more than nine sections is X, and we've got X, but we're only going to build the building for nine sections, but make sure that all the squares are.
And assure us that.
And he did assure us of that, but you want to see the square footage.
I want to see that writing.
Okay.
Because we were assured.
Well, we would, well, no, we weren't though, because the board.
Kids, yes we were.
My understanding is that the board eventually, when Taylor Prairie was built, and again when Glacial Drummond was built, because of budget constraints and whatever the reason, and even the high school was built, they cut the square footage of the IMC when the high school was built, they cut the square footage of the classrooms to make it all fit in, and what, that's what I was saying, as, that as a board, I don't want us to do. I want us to stick to the plan, because it's not, the architects can design it for the appropriate size, and if the board says, oh, it's going to be too expensive, we back off, we're right back where we started. So that's on us as much. So that's on us as much as it's on them. I think that comes there.
I would point out that these are, that we get to approve the design. The referendum does not commit us to just building whatever the architect puts down in front of us. We get to approve the design, and our criteria is board. And I agree a hundred percent is that we want to have expansion available as an option. That's going to come to us, and if the architect does not give that to us, we will turn around and say that we have to do this.
But Peter, what I'm saying here, you have a number here of thirty-three million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is grades, what the only thing we have here is grades three to five with ability to expand. I would like to have more specifics on what that would be, and I'd like to hear, I hear Dan saying also, an expansion too far is not, is too large a school too. And so what we need to do is decide either what school we're going to build, or forget about expansion, or if it's going to be smaller, then let's put in what we're going to put in expandable to, this amount. So that, then we're into the core facility thing, and this to me is a very-
Okay, and maybe now would be the perfect time, perhaps, you know, for John or Julie to clarify. That design does not begin until after you pass a referendum. We're not drawing building plans right now, okay? And so this is conceptual, this is really important. This is a number with the ability to expand, and all that detail that you want to hear and see will happen when you start designing the building, pending the successful referendum. There'll be a year and a half of planning before you break ground.
Yeah, I'm concerned what we have to put in writing now versus what we, it's not, I mean, we are going to be, we are going to be making those decisions about how expandable it is and how many students are in it. And whether the core, where the core areas are, we're the ones who are going to be looking over those recommendations.
Excuse me.
Dean? Okay.
But Peter, if you have a number down here, whatever the number is here, I don't want to debate what that number is at this point, but would say nine classrooms, my, that can also say nine classrooms per grade with an ability to expand to twelve. But if we don't want twelve, let's say it now. Okay? Because that has a lot to do with whether that's a thirty-three million thing or a thirty-eight million dollar thing. Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, we're approving thirty-three point five million, which will-
Well, I don't see what I'm getting for thirty-three point five.
Eric?
Maybe I don't understand about, I, to me, it's like we need to make a decision on the referendum for some of the fifty-seven million dollars. If I read the referendum question, it's asking for us to approve the fifty-seven million for the public purpose of paying the cost of the district-wide school building improvement plan consisting of, that it goes through list. Once that's approved, it's not obligating us to what the amount is for, or what specifically the design of the elementary school, nor even the renovations or the capital maintenance costs, and also including the grade configurations. I think those are all things that we need, are going to be some thorough discussions on our part, but if we don't come to an agreement on moving forward with this referendum at fifty-seven million dollars, it's going to, we could discuss this for a very long time, and then miss our opportunity to go to referendum. So I'm wondering if we could take a step back and find if everybody is in agreement that, yes, we agree that we're going to go to referendum for fifty-seven million dollars, and then, once we come to an agreement on that, we can start to discuss some of these other things, because then at least we can move forward with that part of the-
I thought it would be easier to do the pieces first, but perhaps not.
Well, I wonder if it's easier to go, to do it the other way, because I think that this is, this discussion is going to go on for a very long time.
Okay. I think now is the perfect time to have Julie speak to the board, because she'll talk exactly about this process, on decision-making along the way, the design, and so.
I think that's a whole lot. So you kind of know where you're at, but you're wondering what happens next, where are we going, what does this look like? Are we doing a good job? Are we covering our bases? I think Jared is seeking out a slide. So I can't speak strongly to specifics for this project, but I can do strongly tell you what it looks like to go through a project, what the steps look like for you.
One second. So I thought it was on the board docs.
That's okay. I've got a flash sheet here, that's fast. So it can be, we have one document, they'll show you the four different phases that are going to come next, what those look like, so you can kind of see, and that will help to inform what you've done, and to know, okay, this is where I'm going, this is coming next, it'll be pretty handy. So kind of like in the pre-re referendum phase, you're really in a pre-design part. You're setting a stage, you're setting your priorities, you're preparing for a successful referendum. So design comes at that point. So it sounds like to me that, you know, you've got a good group of people doing good work, you're doing your due diligence, you're studying what's your current state, you know, what do we have right now, what's our future look like? That's really important to this phase. Yeah, that's it.
Perfect.
Perfect, okay. So is it possible for us to get that document? I mean, again, maybe I've had it, but I don't have it now. And if you want me to understand this, here's the deal, I'm simple minded, I need to see this. And I need evidence. Part of the material, if this is the process you want us to understand, then we need to be able to see this. And I think that's why we're struggling with, do we do the fifty-seven first, or do we do the major components of that? Again, not a- Yep. And even, Dean, what you're speaking about, you know, can we do this now, or how do we look forward? I mean, things can be phased too. You know, this may be your budget today, but you can do that at a second phase in the future, and just understand that could be something that could happen down the road. So let's just take a look at this. So this is the cover slide, this is the summary slide. For each one of these categories, there's an additional slide, but I really think this is where we want to live and what we want to look at. So this is your architectural design process. Every school district goes through this, pretty much every architectural design project goes through this. So there are basically four phases, and as you can see, schematic design, design development, that's where your design happens, those are your first two parts. They are two to four months in each for duration. So between four and eight months, you have your design done. And when you start out in schematic design, so you, everything goes well, your referendum passes. So then you step into schematic design. At that point, if we can stay on the front page, I'm just going to give the overview, because I think this is really going to help, I think you need big picture. So you spend two to four months on just your schematic design. So what does schematic design mean? What that means is we're going to talk about rooms, types, sizes, quantities, adjacencies, we're going to talk about the exterior of your building, first steps, you know, we're going to lay that stage. You'll have a core team, and they're going to be the ones who will be your final decision-makers. You're also going to have a group that's going to be your visionary team. So we'll work together, two to four meetings during this phase, and we will tell you as every phase goes, this is where you're at, this is what's coming next. So we're going to say, you're in schematic design, you'll have a counter saying, these next four meetings, this is what we're doing. So at the end of schematic design, there is a check, a financial check. So cost estimates are created at the end of that portion, so you know where you're at compared to what your referendum is. It's a little loose, because schematic design is still a little bit of a high level, we won't have all the details yet. At that point, go ahead.
So can I, maybe this is a premature question, but so I'm thinking at that point, if when you, as you're doing that design, you're assembling costs, if it turned out that, okay, this building in order to allow this expansion that we're talking about, might cost a couple hundred thousand more than what we estimated, that might mean, we might have to shortchange some of the things on the maintenance list to cover it. I mean, there is, because looking at the way the possible referendum question, we have total flexibility within that total amount. So we're going to try to keep it as close to the estimate as we can, because we want to do all that other stuff too, but this is where that, some of that flexibility is.
That's a perfect comment, because at the end of schematic design, so we do that cost estimate. So before we proceed, when we get to the end of that, before we proceed in design development, we want to realign the budget. With the information we have, we realign budget, we say, okay, are we comfortable with where we're at? So when that comes through, we see that as a milestone, and we say, we want, you as a team, we'll sign off at that point and say, I feel comfortable with where we're at, I understand the decisions that we've made, I'm ready to use this as a building block for part two, we've readjusted budget, we're ready for design development, your next phase. So that kind of, when you get into design development, now at that point, you have a plan. We'd like to see the walls not move at that point if we can, that's our goal. So at design development, now we deep dive into all the rooms. Now we start bringing our mechanical, electrical, plumbing contractors, all come on in a heavier way. So everybody, it ramps up a little bit. We're looking at interiors, building systems, to get opportunities, again, it's a two to four month process. So here, by the time of design development, we can be spending four to eight months together. So that's why you don't have that design now, because it takes that amount of time. So the end of design development, we do that cost estimate again. Now, we're a little stronger, because we've got a lot of details. So when that cost estimate goes out, it's a little, we have more confidence in it, because of the level of detail of those drawings. Your heavy work is schematic design and design development. When you get to end of design development, there's the sign off, and if the budget needs to be realigned, we realign again. So that is your heavy load. At the end of design development, then it hands off to us for heavy load. That's heavy work for us, because what we've created is a design, but now we have to create construction documents, which are extremely detailed, very different than what we've created. We want to create a construction document that we can hand off, so that can actually be built. So you want to feel confident at the end of design development, when you sign off, you're like, I feel great, I'm ready to roll. You have a level of confidence, because then it hands off to us in a heavier way. During that time, you could still be making some final selections if we're working with you on furniture, different things, but it will be a lighter load at that point for you, it's going to start falling on us at that point.
Let me just, I understand all that phase to go through. I've been through sixty referendums at this stage, okay?
You got it, yes.
As a consultant and that sort of thing. But what I'm hearing is that we need to build, a lot of the support of this will come from people who will say, is it expandable, are you going to have to build a school? The other piece is, you could build a school that's expandable to be too large.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
But I don't understand, or I cannot explain to anyone else at this point, what thirty-three million, five, five hundred thousand dollars buys me? Does it buy me a cafeteria?
Right.
Okay? And if so, my presumption, this is a school designed for about seven hundred kids, six, seven hundred kids. Does it buy me a cafeteria? Does it buy me an indoor gymnasium? Does it buy me hallways of X width? And what other specialty areas there? Because people who say, if you're, if you're going to build this school, could it be expanded to nine hundred? But then we may not want a school for nine hundred. This may be, this may be the right size forever.
Right.
But, so in this very cryptic line here, I don't have enough for me to make a decision, let alone for me to explain it to anyone else, in any place I would go to try to pass this referendum of what we're buying, except, trust me, we're spending thirty-three million dollars, and we're going to have, we're going to have nine, nine classrooms per grade for grades three to five.
Right.
And we'll help, because the complaints now are, the gyms aren't big enough at schools, or the music area isn't big enough, the specialty, you know what I'm talking about.
Dean, can I, can I ask you what specific information you need?
Well, I would like, I would like more than nine classrooms at thirty-three, five.
And I, what, what do you mean by more? Because if we come back with a list of things, you're going to say, well, what about this? What about that?
No, 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 I'm not talking going through all this design phase, that sort of thing. But it seems to me, is there going to be an indoor gymnasium for this school?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And is, and will that gymnasium accommodate the six, seven hundred?
We were told that it would be targeted for seven hundred students approximately.
Okay, okay.
And that's the discussion we had last week.
Okay, if we did, I'm surprised it's not here, because I thought we had far more last week than I have on this sheet of paper.
Those documents are attached on the board docs.
Well, there are a number of people that I have talked to that says we should be building a school with, of what we need now, but with a core capacity that could expand it. Are we building, is, what, does this have the core capacity already here to be expanded? Or are we going to have to do that again in ten years or something? Do you follow what I'm getting at?
Yeah, and the answer is, that's what we mean with ability to expand.
Is this, I'm also asking-
The building to expand can mean, can mean more classrooms. It doesn't, it doesn't use the word core, or, or these kinds of facilities, in which people complain about today that the gym isn't big enough, and that sort of thing.
I understand what you're saying, but until we have the drawing, I mean, is that, I'm sorry, Dean-
Let me describe this. I think when we talk about nine sections, first of all, that's building for increased capacity beyond what we currently have. We're not just building a building to take our current third, fourth, and fifth, this is to show projected growth. The idea of making the building somewhat expandable is making those core spaces larger, the gym, the cafeteria, the hallways, the restrooms, that kind of stuff, which we were assured we would be doing. And that's our choice when we get to these phases. When we're, if we pass a referendum for fifty-seven million, we start designing the school, at that point, we revisit and say, yes, we are committed to having these bigger core spaces just in case. Now, you know, my only concern is, I don't really, I would kind of hope they're, they don't have to ever add the classrooms on, because I think that's plenty big for an elementary school. But you know, you might get in a situation in Kaig Grove where you're, where they, ten years from now, they're projecting down the road, and they're saying, you know, we are going to need a little more space, but we don't really project needing enough for a whole second school, so maybe they are going to want to add on to that school, even though it does add more kids than we might ideally want to see. So I, my answer is, I think we are, we have been assured that we are building flexibility in, but this isn't where we commit to that. Where we commit to that is once the referendum passes and we do the design, then we make sure we're making the footage.
But my point is, if we pass a referendum for fifty-seven million and we approve this list, we run out of money, because we've promised that we're going to be spending this money in other areas.
No, because the referendum is, the question is more general than that, and these go on as the targeted things, but if it comes out, let's say we end up having to spend thirty-six on the school instead, for example, then something else might have to get cut out of maintenance, or we might have to find it out of our capital budget, figure out a way to pay for it. So in other words, what I'm saying is, we do have some of that flexibility when we get to that stage.
I guess my comment is whether or not it has a gym, is up to us in the design phase.
I, I think what we can do though-
It's going to have a gym, yeah.
This is a working document for the board. Obviously, if you approve a resolution, there's going to be a ton of communication, you know, those couple of months leading up to the referendum, and that is an important question, that we need to be very clear when we're communicating. And so we absolutely are all on the same page, we've said it all, I think what you're saying is, let's get it in writing. So I think we could easily put on this document those enrollment capacities, okay? With nine classrooms, we'd accommodate six hundred and twelve students, with core areas, which would expand up to a capacity of seven hundred students, or thereabouts. We could put those bullet points on there.
Julie, can I ask what the, that thirty-three point five million, what were the design assumptions that you put in to get into that number?
And those are specifics that I do not have in my hand. Do you have some, Andy?
Dan, what you just said would, at this stage of the game, would partially satisfy it. Because I want to see what you, what we feel, no matter how big a gym is, what should be the capacity of the school in any event. But, but we need to say that the gym and all the core facilities need to be expanded to- need to be expanded to three more classrooms, or something like that.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges we have, we literally have hundreds of documents, you know, the FACs created and so on. I think as we try to put these summary documents together, I agree, I think it's an important point to have in there, as part of the summary document.
But it seems to me, that's just a bare bone specifics that we need now to approve this thing.
Dean, hang on a second. Dean, I'm going to ask the architect to fill us in on what the design, and see if this satisfies your question, what the design parameters that you used to come up to thirty-three point five million?
So first off, I did not sleep at Holiday Inn last night. I'm not an architect, so, understand that. Before we even go through any of this process, the architectural team, the technical team, costing team from Fendorf goes through something called programming, where we lay out, in some degree of detail, every single space that is going to be in this new facility. Now, that's a very flexible space, right? We could take five hundred square feet in what was planned out as a six thousand square foot cafeteria, and turn that into something else. But at the end of that, this programming phase, what we ultimately want is some sort of number, number of square feet, that we can then hand off to the CM for costing purposes. But this program document is a kind of line-by-line summary of all of the spaces that could potentially exist within the new facility. Cafeteria, all of those core spaces that we spoke about, plus the instructional spaces, the support spaces as well. Does that help?
Let me ask specifically, the design thirty-three point five million gives us room for six hundred and twelve students. And with, I assume with all the support facilities, how big, what is, what's the sizing of sort for the gym? Do you happen to know, maybe you don't know?
Right, so I don't want to, I don't want to veer too far afield from my area of expertise, but I'm just looking at one specific example, and I can say that the last document that I saw, the last version of the commons cafeteria, was about six thousand square feet. The assumption there was, it was sized for three lunch periods, two hundred and forty students. So that's, if my math is right, about seven hundred and twenty students. We're building this nine sections, that's about six hundred and twelve students. So you should see there, that, you know, that core space in particular, or for example, is sized up pretty substantially to house the population and provide for some degree of expandability into the future.
So, in my summary of what happened, of what we discussed last week, and I don't, were you there last week?
Yes.
Was that, we talked about six twelve, core size for seven hundred, and then the ability to expand classroom space and so on to seven hundred. Now, the public communication piece aside, given that understanding, is that what we want to do? Now, or is it, or is there something else that you find appropriate, Dean? No, no, I want to take your concerns seriously. Is that sufficient, regardless of what's written down, is that sufficient? Does that satisfy you as a design criteria?
Looks like a lot of trust me, yeah.
But I, I think more importantly, well, hang on a second, let me address that. I mean, before we write a contract with anybody, or before we go for referendum, we can always fill in this language. The question is not...
I would like to have language that said something like, I'm not getting the right numbers. Grades three to five, nine classrooms per grade, with core facilities designed to expand to X number, whatever your number is.
Okay, well, actually, right now, the design is that they're already built to accommodate seven hundred and some.
But you're saying you'd like to see that, like on this sheet?
If we're not going to expand, it seems to me, once you expand, what I hear Dan saying is, once you expand beyond seven hundred, the school's getting too big, and you need another school. Okay? So the idea of having a core facility to expand is kind of a hollow, is kind of a hollow planning strategy.
Well, I think part of the rationale on that is, you don't know what the grade configuration's going to be in the future as well. Maybe it becomes an intermediate school, you know, once the enrollment reaches that. So I think having that ability to expand is a sound decision, you know, to give that flexibility. But I think ultimately, what the board has to decide is, the FAC and administrative recommendation is to build for current capacity of about six hundred, expandable to seven hundred, as Peter said. That's, and that's what the question is, and we won't get it in writing, but the question, you have to decide, are you comfortable with that? And I think the point you just raised, Dean, is, you know, that's a legitimate question. Do I want to see an elementary school of seven hundred kids? No. But do I think we should build the gym in the commons area to have it, so you could have seven hundred kids? Yes, because it might be a different grade configuration in the future. And you might be forced to have an elementary...
Seven hundred is how many classrooms?
About ten.
That's one classroom for one.
That's right, that's correct.
Again, this is a comment that I made at least an hour ago, and that was, this isn't enough information, and it isn't laid out in a way that's clear. I agree that by adding the things that Dan just gave us, minimally, nine classrooms per grade, designed to accommodate X number of students, with ability to expand to this number of students, I don't have that here. I don't think I have that anywhere. That's what I need.
That's what we're discussing, okay? Given, are you saying you, unless you see it in writing, you're not prepared to support that? You can't support the verbal, you can't support a verbal discussion?
This doesn't mean anything. This could be, this could be for five hundred students.
Ultimately, what we do here tonight doesn't mean anything. Because we will approve a draft of a referendum on August eighth, or we will have it before us to approve, and sometime in the future we'll approve it. In addition, we will approve all these design criteria. My question, I just want to give the, this isn't about communicating with the public. This is about giving the administration enough information that they can proceed, and with the document that they can bring back to us, okay? The question is, so, can we give the direction to the administration that we would support them coming back to us with a document that says, six hundred and twelve, expandable with a capacity of seven hundred, expandable with a capacity of seven hundred? And that they can use that then as what they bring us in August? Or do we have to have them bring that to us before we can give them direction on it? And do they have to have them bring it to us in writing before we can give them direction on it? Susan?
I mean, I think if we want that, it's basically this sheet, it's just adding a couple of lines. Right now, it says, grades three to five, nine classrooms for grade with ability to expand. So underneath that, all you do is say, built for six hundred and twelve, with core built for seven hundred.
With the ability to expand to seven hundred.
Right, I mean, that's what we're talking about. And Dean's question is a good question about, do we really want to do that? I agree with Dan, I think we do, because we just, we want to, that's where we've gotten kind of burned in the past. I think we do want to have it built for seven hundred. I would, I think building for ten classrooms is too big. But I think building the infrastructure within the building to accommodate seven hundred is a good idea, because we don't know for sure. You know, changes, no, we're not, no, I'm just, that is a good question. I'm agreeing with you, but I don't personally have to have that written, because I feel like we talked about it a lot, and we talked about it at the last meeting. But if you guys want it in writing for the next meeting, that's what we're trying to get cleared here. It's just write down on this sheet, six hundred and twelve.
All right, here's my question.
That's all I'm asking.
Who is, here's my question. Who is in favor of us moving forward to referendum, and as part of that, building a three to five elementary school, initially with classrooms for six hundred and twelve, core spaces, I'm going to put it in sections, nine sections, core spaces for seven hundred students, with the ability to expand it to ten sections? For thirty-three point five million dollars? Is that, I am ready to support that at this moment.
I'm ready to support that, if it turns out it's thirty-six or thirty-four, I'd do that. That's what we want to build, and let's hope it comes out about that.
And do we also need to say that the school is going to include the gym capacity of seven hundred?
Well, that's what I just said, was core, I just said core spaces for seven hundred.
Will we get bathrooms?
Yeah, that's what I did, what core spaces are.
Okay.
Showers?
Core spaces, I think architects understand what core spaces mean.
Isn't this, what you said sounds fine to me. I thought that's what I asked a half hour ago.
It was forty-five minutes to an hour ago, Dean.
But it's not there.
What's that, what do you mean it's not there? It's there, I just made that statement, so I'm now asking...
We won't take a formal vote till next time, when it's actually in writing.
Well, I want to, I want to have, make sure that we have, you know, a show of hands, that we know for sure that the board supports these elements. We will, of course, have a final vote on the whole thing, but what I want is a crack election.
Dan, you don't want the school to expand to nine hundred, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I think if that's the case, and we want to use that judgment, then let's, don't say it's expandable, let's say it's going to be, I mean, not to nine hundred, but you're willing to go to seven hundred, or something like that. Well, let's, let's just put it in like you folks have said. And something that I think I asked for a half hour ago.
But you, I think what yours, what we heard you saying is, you want it in writing before you'll even give approval to it, and that's where I'm thinking, can we just type, add this and round off quick? I mean, I don't know.
This does not say anything to me that gives me any comfort.
But now, since...
But the person that you're going to have to trust to deliver on what you want is yourself, and the rest of this board. Because we were the ones who will make that decision. How big is this, how big is sized, how expandable it is, and so on. We're the ones who get, who will make that decision down the road. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, continue.
All right, show of hands, what I just stated, show of hands, who would support that six, nine sections, expandable to seven hundred, core facilities sized for seven hundred, for thirty-three and a half million dollars?
I'm not comfortable with a show of hands, because it looks like a vote. I think we...
Well, we can take a vote.
I'm suggesting that you ask for consensus, and then anybody who doesn't support it would not be in consensus. That's a clear statement.
That's the same, it's the same as taking a vote.
Not the same, read the rules.
I have, I've read the rules, you know, we are, we are on notice for consideration, we can actually take a vote.
Yes, you can.
That's right. And that's, you know, so, and we can also do this by unanimous consent. Does anyone object to the language that I just stated? Then I think that we have consensus on that.
Do you want to re, just restate it, so that Dean can hear your pieces?
Yes, building a, constructing a three to five, a three to, construction of a school for grades three to five, with capacity for six hundred, I'm sorry, nine sections, plus core spaces built for seven hundred, with the potential, designed in such a way that we can expand as necessary to no greater than seven hundred and fifty. We can make that decision, we can, students? I wouldn't say that.
The idea of the design to expand is so that you kind of have some classrooms on.
Okay, the design to expand to seven hundred.
The core space is already there, so I...
If we're going to basically expand it by a hundred students, I think getting too large is too large, too.
Well, I think, that's an objection. I mean, do we not want to expand it?
I think you can expand it modestly, I'm not, I'm not for a great expansion. I just want to know that you can put that language in for core, the core facilities, and that applies to me.
Of course.
And that sort of thing, which I thought thirty-five, forty minutes ago.
That's just what I stated. But you seem not to agree with it.
Okay, I agree with the concept.
Does anyone object to that? Can I say that the board, that that's the board decision to proceed on this element? Just consideration.
I would say there's board consensus.
Yeah, the board consensus, that's right.
Then another question I'd have on that, does that change the cost roughly another half a million?
No, that's what the design criteria was laid out last week for us was.
That's correct.
So we're being overcharged for the smaller school already?
No.
That's, no. That's not correct. No, the current, the current building program is a nine-section school, three through five, with the core spaces sized to a ten-section school, seven hundred students. That's the total square footage that was then costed by Fendorf at thirty-three point five.
Sounds like what you were going to do anyway.
Excuse me?
That's what you were going to do anyway.
Well, that was what we were asked to put together.
Okay, too bad it wasn't written down, okay. All right, let's go.
Okay, so we have that element. The additional elements are the maintenance and security district wide. Those are, are these covered on, no, they're not. But we have definitely separate documents last week.
We have a real detailed one of those.
So we go back to the workshop documents?
No, it's actually posted...
Capital maintenance project.
Capital maintenance project.
There's a whole, what kind of documents are those?
That's right, from Fendorf.
So there's actually two documents that are posted. One's a pie graph, that shows you dollar amounts broken out per building. And then there's a very detailed itemized list that shows you fourteen point eights. Just for clarification purposes, if you go back to the workshop and what we've talked about, originally, the FAC had recommended the sixteen point four, and that included Maywood School. And as we were putting together the survey, the board had chosen to remove Maywood. Obviously, it's being leased out to Madison, so that brought us down to the fourteen point eight. As well, as a reminder, is, these items were part of the original facility study. So we've actually had two contractors look at it. It started out by CG Schmitz, putting together that massive binder that was passed along to the board. And then, when we moved to Fendorf, then that binder was passed along from Fendorf. Fendorf had looked at the items and has done the costing, and so that's where you're seeing this list from.
Dean?
I have a question, Jared. Does the fourteen point eight, does that bring us down to getting rid of all the backlog that we have?
Yes, so the fourteen...
Assuming that we budget six hundred thousand a year, which we do now, I believe.
Yep, within, yep.
If we do that a year, just to kind of maintain five, six hundred thousand, we will have caught up with all the backlog with this.
Yes, this takes care of all the urgent items that were identified originally through the process.
And that gives us, that relieves a lot of the operational costs and expenses in our budget.
Well, it doesn't alleviate our operational costs, because we have not been doing these, hence the reason that they're on the capital budget, so...
We still maintain the same amount of expenditure annually.
Right, we need to maintain that, six hundred thousand in capital, to continue to maintain our six, and potentially seven.
Okay, I got you, I support that one.
Does anybody object to the fourteen point eight million dollar maintenance and security district wide lineup? Susan?
I don't at all, but I, one of the biggest cost items that went away is replacing the windows. And I've had a few people say, we really need to replace all those windows. And I just wondered if you could say something about that, having, I thought they needed to be replaced when I was in that building over ten years ago, but I just wanted to say that.
Technically, they're single panes windows, and if you stand in front of them, you can actually feel the wind come through. In addition to Fendorf and CG Schmidt looking at them, we will also continue to work with McKinstry. We're not going to add on new projects above the fourteen point eight. For McKinstry, will be there to assist us through this process as well, to make sure that when we can make those selections. And we've identified the entire building, obviously, as we start looking at even more depth, there might not be the entire building, but based on our initial review with both construction companies, they definitely need to be reviewed.
Will some of this be offset by energy savings?
No, because, well, yes, yes, we won't be going through any Act fifty-two or Act thirty-two. But there would be just natural saving. And any of these things that we do of updating old boilers, updating roofs, anytime you put a new event, there's obviously going to be indirect utility savings come along with that. But what does that look like? We don't have that number right now.
You know, just not to, you know, beat a dead horse, but I had the exact same question. And so when Jared and I had our meeting with McKinstry, who of course specializes...
who of course specializes in energy efficiency, you know, and I thought, my goodness, do we really have to replace every window? And, and I don't remember the technical reason, but it was pretty convincing, yes.
Well, I know they used to keep talking them, and I do remember sitting there after schoolwork, and you could feel they were blowing through them. I mean, that's, that's been that way for a long time, so I kind of agreed, just wanted to kinda hear you confirm that, 'cause I have more people have asked about that. The plumbing stuff, the HVAC, that's all excellent, obviously needs to be done.
Yeah.
And they're a big ticket item, so.
I think there's an environmental stewardship thing, there are two, to not be blowing all of our heat out the window.
Right.
Not necessarily. Okay, any objection to the maintenance, security district wide fourteen point eight million line item? Okay. Any renovations in learning spaces, spacings, renovations in learning spaces with eight to eight point million prioritization that is possible with cost cap board decision? I understand that the renovation in learning spaces, there's probably some flexibility and some, a lot of decisions to be made about that pending. We have got a list of potential renovations, and of course, that might change, but the question is, do we wanna go forward with a line item of approximately eight million for this side? There any significant objections to that?
I have some questions, and I did a walkthrough today in Winnequa, Cottage Grove. If, my question is, if we were going to look at money in another area, potentially maybe for something, as an example, for the soccer fields, I'd look at this renovation area of where that money would come from. So I, I would just want some flexibility, just to reserve the right that we can discuss that and maybe make some changes to this section, this renovation section. I do think after going through the schools that these are important. But I, I think that, you know, they don't, to me, they don't, they're not like capital maintenance projects to me, but those are, those are necessities. I think some of these are necessities and some of these are important, but not unnecessary.
My, my comment to that is, yeah, there's, I mean, there's gonna be flexibility. For one thing, we don't do pricing of anything. We have estimates, prices can go up and down. Last, when we built the Glacial Drummond, the, you know, the, we approved the referendum before the economic downturn of two thousand and eight, and, and prices on some materials were less than anticipated, for example. That said, in my opinion, if we tell the public we're spending, we don't have, we have an obligation to the public to sort of stick within our guidelines, not exactly. But we couldn't, you couldn't take three, four million dollars out of renovating learning spaces after promising that to the public and put that in athletic facilities. I don't think that would, that would fly. However, there is some flexibility, you know.
But should that be part of our discussion this week, and that, I mean, that's what I would think.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So if you think that number is too high, and if you think that there's significant athletic space needs, that's, this is not a time to discuss them, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm not saying it's too high, I just, I hear, I've heard some significant arguments that I, I think are very valid for some athletic, that I think, to me, seem equally as important and service as a significant number of students, both girls and boys. So, and I couldn't, I couldn't say, you know, today, if I was going through this, what, where, if, if I, there would even be a decision I'd be comfortable making, I would just like hit to potentially have the option, or maybe there's some sort of agreement or discussion that if there is any extra, if anything does come under the quotes, that, that can be set aside for some specific, you know, like our, you know, next set project B, that, you know, that we would, we would put that money towards that area so that the public would know, oh, what becomes it at the elementary schools of costing thirty-two, I think there's an extra million dollars. You know, where does that million dollars go? Can we put that towards the next agenda item, which might be the.
I think, I think that that's a really good idea, that we state, if we have any additional money left over, it's gonna go into.
What did you wish to say?
That we, that if we state that if any of these things come in under budget, for example, we save a million dollars on the school, that we tell the public that with that additional million dollars, we would have a priority list, and that priority list might include athletic facilities, for example.
So I, I would even be comfortable accepting the eight, the eight million renovations if we had a priority list for any money that would be extra.
Susan?
I, I would like to, again, I don't have a good feel what these priorities are on renovations.
Agree with you.
I, I mean, I'm looking at one point seven, I'm looking at four point four million at Cottage Grove School. What's, again, how important are these pieces? I don't have a good feel for that. We haven't really discussed the renovations. We've, we've talked about the capital improvements, and we've got a great document on that. I really don't, and then, again, look at these amounts. I, I agree with Eric. I think we, the two last things we're gonna be balancing are renovations and other facilities for extracurriculars. That's what I would follow. And because I don't have good detail, I mean, it tells me what it is, but renovation of student services bases per main office relocation, I want, I, and.
That.
I don't, that's tied to the security. Now, see, that would, that would be very helpful. If you could show me which of these items are security items, that would really help, and make sure that none of these are covered by the grant, we got a grant, you didn't talk about that.
Peanuts.
Oh, we didn't get that. Well, we got a grant, but not for this stuff. Well, that's what I'm asking. If it's security, do we have anything?
These, these plans were laid out in the committee recommendation.
Do we have?
I think there was a drawing of.
So let's, just like.
Can I verify that?
Okay.
Wasn't there a drawing of Winnequa with showing some of the improvements to be made?
Well, there are many, but nothing that's ready to, because this is a very much a work in progress, and that, and that's back to, you know, what Julia was presenting about the design, the renovations, absolutely, you're not gonna have that final list until, you're, you're gonna develop that following the referendum, because these are, this was the most difficult piece, you know, we had, was it the original number, was it eighteen or twenty? Twenty, of possible renovations, and to get down to that eight million dollar mark, we've done some initial work on prioritizing, but clearly, that's the type of thing that is gonna change probably, maybe dramatically, as we put the design team together to determine exactly which projects. We know some of these certainly are hot there, but, you know, as you get down towards the end of that list and the ones on the waiting list, I expect a lot of that to change yet at this point. If I, if, just real quick, if I don't mind, I absolutely agree a hundred percent with what Eric said, that this is the most flexible piece. And so, we're gonna talk about athletics here shortly, and so should you decide, and I think that's something you should decide prior to voting on the resolution, is you might choose to say, let's do a couple other athletic projects, and then if you do decide that, it would definitely come out of the referendum bucket.
Maybe the renovation bucket.
Renovation, thank you, renovation.
I come down.
Yeah.
Shall we, I was gonna say, go ahead, we could skip on the athletics, but.
Well, so, I mean, when I look at Winnequa School, I don't see anything about any ability or thought about the cafeteria space, which was a discussion when we took the tour. So, again, I don't know what they take, what, they, somebody's prioritized other than us. And if that's the principles, that's great, then I, I just need to know that. I don't know how you got from A to B to this, and I don't know the rationale for the pieces that are within the school.
Yeah.
And until I understand that better, it's difficult to say, yeah, I need eight million.
Okay, sure, great question. So, the original twenty point four million came from the two thousand and fifteen Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. Okay, did the walkthrough of all the buildings, the assessment of the buildings was done.
Which school?
Of all of them.
Okay.
And that, the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, with feedback from principals, and so we put together that long list of, of needs. And then, so that's, that was our starting point. Now, since then, when we brought this group together this past year, the EUA did another walkthrough with our building principals again, to update that list, you know, now three years later, to make sure it was still current, or two years later. And that's what, that was kind of that, that rough estimate of every possible thing that we would like to see improved. Now, once we had the survey back, and we started focusing on fifty-seven million, and knew that that renovation number had to decrease substantially, the first crack at prioritizing came from Jared and myself, and Jeff Carr, working with the team from EUA and Fendorf of projects that we knew were high priority, you know, based on the conversations we've been part of. Then the next step was that we did bring in all the principals, okay, to meet as well with the team, to go through and get their thoughts, and there's another adjustment. So that's where we've been up to this point, and then the next phase moving forward, of course, you know, the board will have that opportunity, the staff, you know, and the design, that all will come. So, again, that, that's how we've come to that number at this point, but it's definitely a moving target, and, and things have and will continue to change in that renovation list.
Peter?
Yes, Dean?
I think it was alluded to here, I, I think a, a new category besides renovations and, and capital maintenance would be security. I, I, I think I would pull that out and.
I agree.
And, and it, uh, 'cause I, I think, A, I think that, are there, are there any security items that you've left off, or do you, have you, are you still yet to come up with a comprehensive security plan someplace?
Well, we're still working through the comprehensive, I mean, obviously, there's lots of things that we would like to be looking at. It's not necessarily on here, but I think the, the big priorities for us right now is Winnequa getting that, which has been listed. And then when you look at Cottage Grove School, you know, a lot of their renovations deal with their corridors and the way that the doors swing out or swing in and having door locks, that's not.
So some of the renovations are security.
Yes.
Without the word security attached to it.
Right.
I, I would suggest that if, if part of the primary move for that is simply not changing the door, but it is a security issue, that we do have a category of, of safe, of safety or whatever it is, and make that a separate category, and then we'll have a, then we'll have renovations as kind of, at least in my thinking, pure renovations.
Well, what we know, that the security items are in with maintenance, maintenance and security items.
But not all of them.
No.
Because in Cottage Grove, the door, the doors, I saw it today, the door issue is a security issue because of the way that the doors open. So that, that would fall under security and be part of, you know, that's listed under the renovations and not the capital maintenance. And there, and at Winnequa, there are some, yeah, there are some security things too listed in our renovations. So actually, Dean, I think you bring up a good point. In order, if we were going to, if I was going to prioritize the renovations, I certainly would be looking at those security things first as, you know, priority renovations that need to be done because they're related to security, as opposed to something like replacing cabinets at Cottage Grove School, which I think are important for instructional organization and teaching, but they're not as, as vital as I see them as the security pieces, so. And those align more with me with athletics. When we get to the cafeteria, athletics, those are doing the same thing for the students, I think are important, but I'm gonna put security before that, so I wanna make sure, as you said, Dean, that we're addressing the security things in the renovation areas.
No question, yeah, we're all agreeing on that.
Is that, could you do that?
Absolutely.
That'd be good.
Well, given, do what? I mean, now, we don't have specific cost estimates of doors at Cottage Grove. Okay, but we certainly would go through and finalize the priorities, no doubt that the safety and security stuff will come first.
And, and I would, I, yeah, I think separating them out, talk, when we talk about them, we talk about the security maintenance and these renovations that are not related to those that are separated, it's the learning, learning renovations. The question before us tonight is sort of this outline of list of things, which includes ser, security. Do we want that number to go up or down, or is it, is it just right, is the question?
My, my question, my question is, is there something, are there security items that are not on this list? Or, I, I don't see the word security frequently here, and I think, and I think in our informal discussions that there are more security items, not that we have to put them all on hit this time, but it would seem to me that, that if we have some immediate security issues, I would much rather deal with them maybe on this referendum than, than a new cabinet or something like that, that'd be my, at least give us a choice.
And I guess, the question would be, are there any big-ticket security items that are not already on the list?
Not, as of right now, now that we have identified, the, the, the top priorities was the entrance and the doors.
Here, you got them on here.
Yes, obviously, there are other things like, you know, part of the safety grant that we applied for, waiting to hear from, you know, we'll take care of security cameras, plus some of those are in the capital budget to be able to do that. The other side of things is, you know, window hardening, not that we would put that in every window, that was part of the safety grant, but only specifically for the front main entrance. We've identified there are some other areas that we want to do, but we also have built into our budget, and also our operational referendum of the two point six is increasing some of those. And so, being true to the process, those are items that we've pushed into that area.
Okay. Susan?
I'd like us to go through this list, I think we, as Dean said earlier, thirty minutes ago, and deck, and just put the word security, safety by any of these items that are security or safety. So for instance, when it says renovation of main entrance to create a secure entry and check-in point, I assume that is security and safety. That should be marked that way. That will help us, since we're not getting any priority in this section of eight million dollars. That will help us who feel security and safety is important, be able to look at what might be more flexible within a section. And that's either yes or no, anytime.
That would be correct, yes.
Can we do that?
So, well, yeah, because I think what you're saying, you just said you don't have dollars, but obviously, it's some guidelines to go up with this total, for example, one point seven at Winnequa. So, the way I read this, the first, the top three probably all may relate to security, I don't know, but everyone would have taken a mic. So are you asking that, so it says new elementary school, that's a topic, then you might have one that says renovations for security, that might be a topic.
Yes.
And then you would have Winnequa School with those three things, Cottage Grove School with the doors under that. Then you would have instructional renovation, or however else you wanna word it and list all the other stuff, that's what you're asking, and it's for that breakdown. I think that's all you're saying. So it does mean you have to go back and pull up from the one point seven about what, and again, these are approximate, and we always have to stress that when we talk about the referendum anyway, like we did last time, 'cause, you know, we got hit with that huge rewiring for tech that came in that was, it's, you know, I mean, it's, you're still left with the same amount.
Stuff happens.
Yeah, stuff happens, and the amount, the exact amounts might shift within the total, but, yeah, I mean, if that would be helpful, and I agree, it would be helpful to explain to the public, 'cause that's gotta be pretty expensive to relocate the main office. It's a good chunk of that on its own.
Do you know of any items that you, I mean, is there, do you have thoughts that some of these items would come off the list, or there are some security things that are missing that need to go on here?
Not necessarily, I'm just asking that minimally, you take those that's included in the eight million and break it up into two sequences. And that, I'm, I'm trusting that the list here is complete. I'm just trying to break it out into, I'm trying to find a priority system for safety and security, that's it.
Does, Susan?
So, well, so last, so back to Eric's point, if we, if we, 'cause we talked about this a little, little bit last meeting, we kinda got it at the end of it, where we were talking about the athletic facilities, and if we wanted to try to find some additional money on the rest of this list that might be able to do a grass soccer field, for example, we had a figure of one point one million, and I understand now that actually the turf, the figure we were giving for turf is wrong, but it's lower than that. I mean, if there's a way to squeeze some of the money toward that and have a plan to add to it later, I mean, that's, that maybe should be part of this discussion. I don't, I'm not sure if that's what.
Well, I guess first of all, the answer to the question, well, it's safety and security, yes. As we prepare new documents, we will, we will make it a point to highlight safety and security pieces, whether it's on maintenance, renovations. Okay, so we've got, yes, we'll do that. Second, I think to help this discussion, we should be working off. Second, I think to help this discussion, we should be working off of the recommendation from the Facilities Advisory Committee. If you all look at page five of that recommendation, actually starts at the bottom of page four, the final recommendations, we've kind of gone a little bit out of order here, okay? And, and those, you know, their bullet points were intentional to be in order. First one, the school we've talked about. Secondly, high priority maintenance. Third, want to write to athletics, and then the last bullet point, use remaining resources to fund high priority renovation projects. And so I do think we need to get to that athletic discussion, and that may or may not, if that changes, obviously then, what the remaining, if you accept the recommendation, okay, it does fall to the renovations piece that you were lower. So, um-
Well, I'm, I'm reading that as saying that the recommendation is that athletic, something done for athletics would come before and then the remaining go to renovation.
Yes.
Okay. And here, it seems like the renovation is coming-
Right.
-high priority and athletic issue, because it, it seemed to me that the high school track was, was kind of always coming through when there may be other-
Yep.
Maybe another need, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Let's, um, do we think that generally this eight, this, how do I call this, eight? It's actually, what the number here is 8,55,000. Do, is there general agreement for that, this list, regardless of how it's classified, is approximately the right number? Is the right number? And that we can move forward, Susan?
I'm saying no, and I'm saying-
This is-
What I want to see is, I want to see anything that's related to safety and security on this $8 million list broken out in an approximate cost of within the $8 million of what that is.
That you're not going to get. We, the cost estimates are based on square footage, not individual projects. We don't have for renovations, cost breakouts, a door costs this, a cabinet costs this. They're identified on, you know, high, what are the terms that we use?
Light.
Light renovation, heavy renovation, square footage, these are very approximate costs. That detail about all those projects, okay, you will have a say as a board member in approving those. Okay? And I think we've heard loud and clear, the safety is, we're all in agreement, that has to be a priority. So we can start identifying some of those things, okay, but we won't be able to break out the costs, separate them that way.
Eric was first.
Oh, yes, sorry. What if we, what if we did it a little bit differently?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we went back, we decreased that renovation number by 1.8 million dollars, went back to the principals, asked them to prioritize the areas and moved that 1.8 to athletics. Can we do that? Because, because it sounds like to me, I, I personally think there's 1.8 there in the renovations, if, if we wanted to make the athletic piece a priority. I don't know if that's probably a discussion we haven't had yet, but when I, when I was looking at this, and when I did my walkthrough today, I'm not saying it all comes from one, one place, but I, but I, I think that we might be able to find it.
Yes, is the short answer. We could do that.
Okay. I think, I think what we should do is talk about the athletics right now.
That's right, yeah.
And, and see where we are, and then we can come back to this. Well, my only concern is though, when we did cut back, I mean, I personally think prioritizing learning spaces is important, and we did take a pretty substantial cut out of the initial recommendations when we did that. But, that said, right now, the athletic, the athletics component currently comprises a new track. And what's the thinking on that?
Okay.
Could I-
Yeah, you go first.
Start, okay, so, again, this process about determine these preliminary priorities. We initially had, right back to it here, identified 14.8 million dollars worth of athletics facilities. And so, when we had to narrow the overall number to 57, immediately we knew the track was the highest priority, it has to be replaced. To be honest, we didn't have a great deal of discussion about Wayne Turf Field Soccer Stadium versus lockers or cabinets at Cottage Grove. In fact, we didn't have that discussion, okay? Now is the time to have that discussion. I will say, in the time since then, and we haven't had a whole lot of time, you know, from the time the survey came back, we have spent more time now analyzing the athletic stuff. And we've heard feedback from board members, we've heard feedback from community members about, you know, some things that are priorities. So, just this past week, I think, I'm confident, and I'll speak for Jeff and Paul as well, that the three of us would recommend that we increase the athletic portion and take some away from the renovation. The next item that we believe would be a high priority would be the turf field at the high school stadium, with the idea that in the short term, it could, it will benefit football, soccer, and other activities, fayed, other, you know, anything else that could go on there. Ideally, yes, we'd like to have a separate soccer field, I think that would still be a long-range plan. That'll be your discussion if you wanted to try to do both, but in our order, the first thing would be the turf. If you, as a board, decided let's pay for that in its entirety, okay, I certainly would support that, but what I would like to recommend is that you consider, we do believe that we could do private fundraising to pay for a portion of that. And so, to start with, we would recommend that, starting with about a $500,000 allocation towards turf, and that with the goal that we could do private fundraising slash, you know, sponsorships to come up with the other 500,000. The approximate cost for the, just the turf field is about a million. That 2. whatever it was quoted, that was everything, that was including press box, bleacher expansion.
Okay, so just the turf?
Yeah, approximately a million, yeah.
That 2.8, sorry, 2.8 million includes renovations to the press box?
I think a new press box.
And what about this, the stadium, the bleachers, or the-
Additional bleachers, new entrance, you know, all those other improvements that were part of that.
And you're saying that if we were going to approve for the turf, if we did half of that, 500,000, the rest could possibly be raised through donations?
Yes.
So, well, how would that work if we, I mean, we, we want to be trying to raise that before construction starts, I assume.
Correct.
So then, if we didn't, would we have a fallback plan where we'd pull more money out of-
Well, or it doesn't get done, and you move on to something else. But the, absolutely, we'd know that they, we would have to have those funds committed by, if we did, if you do choose to do referendum in November, those funds committed by spring before we begin.
Right. Okay, so that'd be a big pusher, some serious numbers.
Yeah.
An additional 500,000 is almost something you can take out of a fund balance, given our healthy fund balance, if we, in an emergency, if we really needed to, you know, do that, not emergency, but if we really needed to-
Well, I think that, I think that is, that would be a significant plus, because I think it still would be, I, in an ideal world, we would also at some point have a grass soccer field in Cottage Grove, probably, just because I think it's nice to have it as well. Given that they could play all, all of, more and more schools are, are adding turf, and it's just so helpful towards scheduling all these games, I think it would make sense to make that a priority, to me.
I wonder if it's, what if it, we did, what if it was both 500 for the, half for the turf and half for the soccer field? Would that be a possibility is for the, to raise money for the soccer field as well?
Um, I'm not as confident that we could do that, I don't, you know, yeah.
Okay, so, so you're confident that the money for the turf field would be likely that we could raise that money?
Yes.
But not sure about the soccer? I, I guess, I, I definitely think that turf is important for a lot of reasons, for having, it came on there.
Good.
For, from a safety standpoint, it's important, although, so I think that's important. But I also really think it would be, if we're talking with the 500,000 for turf and the 1.8 for the soccer field, we're talking about 2.3 million dollars. I wonder, I think, if, I think it could be in the renovate, I think it's there, I do. When I look at cabinets, are they important? Yes, but if, if I, if I make a comparison, I, I'm not going to make a comparison, because I would get scared of the different districts, but as a teacher, I could teach those classrooms.
They also know what else.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I'm just, I mean, I just see the numbers of, of, you know, when we look at a, a sport like soccer, we look at girls and boys, the amount of students that it would benefit for both girls and boys to have a facility, and then the impact that it might have the commu- on the community of Cottage Grove as bringing in more events, I think that that, you know, is something to consider. But I, but I would say that turf would be, you know, I would also agree that would be very important. So, so if there's a way to, to do both, I think it's important, but I, the turf for sure, I would be up for it.
Susan?
Well, it seems like it would be helpful, because when I look at this list, I don't know how large those ticket items are, so it's hard for me to have really much of a sense of how hard it is to get 500,000 out, and then when we think about another 500,000, I don't know that that's so easy. So I guess it would be helpful to see, to see more of a price breakdown of some of this, so we could make those decisions, because there aren't many things on here that are going to go in that category, I don't think, for me, so I, it would be helpful for me to sit, have-
Yeah, unfortunately, that a lot of design work, it sometimes gets hard to do.
It's hard, I know, it is hard, but if, if it's like, is this 100,000, 300,000, what, I mean, I don't know what, and when it says renovate two music rooms, renovate the second art room, do we have a ballpark of what that might be? I don't know. There's, there's, I was looking at it, and I, and I, I also still, I guess, want to make sure we're doing enough at Glacial Drummond to really help that, because that's also a big thing, and it was, when it says removing the wall of the serving entry, is that going to then accommodate two serving lines? So that will be a significant-
The goal is to be able to add additional serving lines that are flexible, such as a salad bar, third one-two assist that gets through. Right now, the GDS is designed as you have, there's a structural wall-
Yeah, they all get followed in.
-due to the works, and the goal is to open that up and put more of a movable wall-
Okay.
-that can be closed to lock it off, but then when we want to serve lunch, we can bring out and move the, the equipment that serves it out.
And we'd still have seating with doing that, or without?
And that would be part of the reason of removing the stage that's there is to-
Right.
-get there. And it's not necessarily the seating that we're experiencing, it's the slow-
Right.
-because there's only two lines that can get those kids through.
Right, it's just as long as we still have enough seating.
Yeah, I think that's a really important point, to kind of, there's a misconception, seating's not the issue, it's the serving lines.
Right, no, no, I, I'm aware of that, and I, yeah, it was, yeah.
You know, on athletic facilities, I'm kind of torn, is, is the right thing to do is increase your capacity by putting in a turf field in one facility or building a second facility without the turf, you know, just grass, so that you have two facilities to use.
Man, the turf could be so, for all, all the fia classes and baseball, as they mentioned, baseball, I mean, it could be used for so many sports.
What concerns me is-
The back for your bucket's higher with turf.
Yeah, I know, but what concerns me is we have limited space out here, but, but you end up, yes, everybody can play on it, but there's only so much time in a day-
Right.
-to play on it. If you have two facilities, you know-
It doesn't eliminate the need for a grass field, it just, I think it would really help us more in the short run than adding a grass field.
And, and perhaps, it would, but the thing is, we have limited space out here at the high school. And, you know, and how you manage to, to, you know, use that space here, and, and we have lots of space in Cottage, out in the Cottage Grove facility right here, now, and, you know, the 48th, we do a lot. And, and I just wonder if there's moving, moving activity off this high school field might be a good way to do, and I don't know which is also, which is more cost-effective solution to the problem.
Well, the high school kids are at the high school.
I know.
Yeah, the thing that would have been helpful, at least minimally, was to know how many kids, so Jeff, as I remember, and maybe you've changed that, there's no practice space for the soccer kids on the high school facility. Where do they prac- so where do the soccer kids practice?
At GDS.
Okay, so-
They go out there.
They're already out there, that's my point. If we had an understanding as a board where they are, they come back and play their games there, but all of that scheduling, reject those. So just so you know, what was the year we did this study for the soccer stadium? Just guess off the top of your head. How many years ago did we do it?
14, 12, 14.
At least, okay? So it's over five years ago, I'm saying more like seven, because I think it's pretty soon after it's-
Yeah, I know the practice, that's why I'm suggesting that maybe facilities out there might be more useful on the-
We've already done the study. All we have to do is-
Well, yeah.
I'm saying, I'm not saying the pricing is the same. We did the study because we thought that many years ago it was important, so we know as a fact that there was support for it at that time. Do we know it's still there? I don't know. But, that's been a factor, and Jeff has coped with that beautifully for all these years. He had a lot of very good reasons for wanting to explore that back then. The plan also, it wasn't just a field, it was lights. And I told you before, we took the freshman soccer kids out to Taylor Prairie, they were practicing out there, and the neighborhood shut that down. So, what we have to do is make sure, based on what we had, the spaces that we're looking at would accommodate that, and then had a rough idea of what it costs. That'll give us a start point on the soccer.
We heard, we heard 1.1 million with no lights for soccer, for grass soccer fields.
No, it was with lights.
No, I thought it was no lights.
I thought it was with lights.
1.8 with lights.
With lights and with the-
So 1.8's a lot to pull out of here.
But you, so, here's the other deal, you've also built a home, so that's-
And now we're not doing turf if we're doing that. I'm just saying, we can, I don't think we can do both of those things.
Yeah, I kind of viewed it as that choice, too.
Let's see the numbers, let's see the numbers.
Maybe, here's what I, I would feel comfortable supporting. We have $8 million for the renovations. I would support taking 500,000 off of that, changing that to 700, or 7,555,000, moving that 500,000 to athletics for the turf. And then, be comfortable supporting this document, but with a agreement that if there is any extra money, that we would be putting that, make a priority list, and on that priority list, well, I could just say make a priority list, but on that list would be the soccer fields, the baseball fields, and some other athletic, maybe even put the tennis court on there, too. And, and list those as our priorities, so that if we do have extra money, because there's, there's no way to know, it's very possible we could, it's probably we can't, but that way, if we do, the public knows, well, what if the school ends up costing 31 million dollars, we have an extra 2 million dollars? Well, here's our priority list, the first is going to go to the soccer fields, then it's, then we're going to go to the baseball fields, then we're going to go to the tennis fields. I would feel comfortable supporting this document if we did something like that, but I do agree that the turf is, is for a, a safety factor alone, and all the games that are played on there, very important, because turf, with that grass field, when you have a football game and two soccer games, and, you know, during the week, it becomes a, it could become a safety factor, and it has, because the field gets beat up a lot, there's more injuries, you know, when that happens.
I just goes, given the hour and the fact that you've mentioned that you have a different proposal forthcoming relative to athletics, we probably aren't in a position to make a decision tonight about that, so I would like to defer the, the additional discussion on athletics, and, and I think that leave, we'll leave that renovations piece open, although based, you know, somewhere, there doesn't seem to be objection that about eight is the right number, maybe we take a million or half a million out for athletics, but, but leaving that at that point, so that they have guidance on where to go next.
Well, it would seem to me that administration has come guidance from this discussion tonight.
Yeah.
We've been more specific tonight than we were the other night, and maybe, you know.
The other thing I guess I'd ask, you know, we've got Jess here tonight, so it's an opportunity, if there's any questions for him, or if Jeff has anything he wants to add that we haven't, you know, considered.
I'm looking forward to your proposal.
We gotta ask him to weigh on that.
Well, Jeff, can you just talk briefly about the importance of the turf and the wear and tear that that field takes right now?
Yeah, the importance of the turf is it, it's clean and it's game ready, like what Eric was saying as far as the safety issues, it's not only safety for our students, it's for both, both teams coming in, you know, to, to give that assurance that our field is playable at the end of the year. It is tough with weather, if we have nice weather, the issue kind of moves away a little bit, not a concern, our field is, the grass is good, everything like that, but it's so inconsistent in the fall. We've had times where first game out, it rains a whole- but it's so inconsistent in the fall, and we've had it sometimes where our first game out, it lays a hole right through, we play the game, our field's down for the rest of the season. Jeff, we put those student athletes on the field at all levels, we still have that same high number of games on there, and that potential risk is always there, but the turf field, it becomes game-ready, it's clean, it's ready to go. For that, only our, our sport teams, but throughout our school day with our fire classes, we have a number of times where our fire classes are raining, like this last spring. Our fire teachers have great humans plan to go outside with their activities, only they have a wet spring, they're inside, they're doing on Plan B and stuff, if there's turf up there, they can still potentially get up there, uh, along with the rain and stuff. Yeah, our spring sports who cram into our, our gym for, for practice times, because they can't get out in their fields, the turf provides that opportunity for those guys to get out there and shave.
Jeff, is, is a turf field, uh, I'm an amateur, but a turf field fairly maintenance-free and cost?
You're gonna have some, uh, where you gotta retool your maintenance equipment instead of your doors, you're gonna have to get some sweepers and things like that, so there is that, that expense on there as well, but there again, um, your maintenance, fertilizer, and the annoying weather and repair work, you have to restate it forward in terms of maintenance on it.
What is the, what about the cost of where you have to replace, it used to be you had to replace a field every 10 years, and half the cost of the initial installation?
I think the overall window or lifespan of turf is changing as well with the developments and technology in turfs.
Do you happen to know?
About 10 years ago, Middleton was the first city that put that turf in. That turf that they put in there is different than the turf that they're putting today, so lifespan has been extended. Weather and our climate definitely impacts the wear and tear on turf as well, so that's kind of an ever-changing piece.
Oh, so we don't have a good estimate of what the cost, the annualized cost of maintenance of this would be, because, including replacement?
Then there's different models to go with as well, too, you know, so.
Uh, I, one question I would have about it is, what's the cost differential between installing turf in an existing field over the track and so on, and, you know, tearing out the, your base, versus putting into a green field on, on currently an unoccupied space? I don't know if there's a significant cost difference, I'd be curious if there's a significant savings in that.
Something I can do for you.
In any event, um, I think we can take that athletic, revisit the athletics issue in the future, and, um, which brings one discussion left. Actually, there's two things here, first is the operations estimate of $930,000, I think that that's a given, does anybody, uh, have any comment or discussion or on, on that portion of it? The, uh, the operations estimate of $930,000. Anyone object to the, anyone think that's horribly misguided?
Is that for this, or?
Yes.
It's right here. Operation for new school administrative perspective, $930,000. That, that brings us to the last one, which is the grade configuration.
Before we do that, we've got Michelle here from PMA, so, um, are there any questions that she can answer with regard to, again, the costing and, and how this, this impact as far as taxes and so on? And she's also involved with, you know, working with our legal team on the actual resolution and the wording as well.
What's gonna happen to the interest rates between now and then?
That's your one question.
I think it's the only question.
Not answerable. We have conservative estimates in, in the low rate impacts that we're using, so I'm not, not worried about any movement that would adversely change what we have out there for the tax impact.
What's your estimate right now, that you're working on, just curious?
Uh, let's see, I think we're using... 4%, um, which is probably at least seventy-five percent.
Primary cost of this is the interest that we'll be paying on the bills. All right, thank you. Thoughts on grade configuration, are we ready to make that decision, or do we need more information? Do we wanna hear from more people, more, um, on that decision, or? Where are we on that? I know where Jeff is. What else want to weigh in?
Well, I, yeah, this, this is still sort of difficult for me, but, but I, um, because of the transitions, but I guess I, after hearing the, kinda the input from some parents and thinking about, thinking about it more, and the disruption to Cottage Grove with the staff with, going with the, the two 4K2 buildings, I'm kinda leaning more towards the transition model, just because it sounds like it's so much more acceptable to parents, and, you know, as you pointed out last year, at some point, if they're all interacquisition, could use a grow, that may not be an option in the future, but it is an option now, our staff is committed to making it work, um, you know, and I think it is hard to tell from the research, because none of the research that you can find is that issue of the same cohort going from building to building, although they do talk about the fact that it's not just the kids knowing each other, it is they are in a new building with all new adults, like they're, they can't see their kindergarten teacher again in the hall, if all of a sudden, you know, now they're in, in first grade, and they're, it's, so it's different, um, but there seems to be such a strong parental feeling in favor of that, that, and I think our, our staff does work very hard to make it work, but I'm kinda leaning towards, I don't, I, you know, I don't want them to feel like, um, if, this scenario that was presented at one, some meeting was that there are so many Manano voters in Manano Pass's referendum, it's gonna create that division in Cottage Grove, and then it feels like they've been handed, I don't know, I just think they're, they're like, it's a political issue for me to go to that, to go to the transitions, but I guess I'm thinking that we do seem to make it work very well. How's that for cattle wishy-washy answers? That's where I'm leaning right now.
Go, go ahead, Eric.
Well, my concern is, um, the 4KK.
4K to two?
4K. No, I'm talking about the transition line, we're in the 4K.
4K, 4KK.
Yeah. Which, which really is a kindergarten building, because 4K is, is such, such a different variable for families and people, not everybody sends, because they have daycare, and I'm going through that right now, so, you know, it's just, 4K isn't, you know, it's hard to rely on. So we're essentially really looking at a building that's kindergarten, that's what we're looking at. It's just, um, that concerns me, have building for one grade, um, just looking at the future, doesn't give us much, much options. I understand the concern of the parents in the, in the community, uh, you know, but it's change, you know, change is, it's difficult to, uh, to take something that is already set up and make a significant change, which would be the, the 4K to second grade buildings. But I think that once it was in place, and, and the students got a chance to experience, and the parents, I think that, um, they would feel comfortable.
Which would be in place, 4K2 or?
The 4K2, so I'm talking about option two, the neighborhood model.
Neighborhood.
I, I would support the neighborhood model option two, the 4K, having two 4K second grade buildings, and one 35 building, for the reason of my concern with having, uh, one building dedicated to basically one grade, with constantly changing 4K numbers every year, and the, um, benefit of having students, um, in the building for three years or four years if they're in 4K, having, you know, potentially having, you know, siblings in the building with them. I, I'm not concerned as much as Jeff was about the, um, demographics of where those buildings would be, I think it would be equitable, and if it's not equitable, we could make it equitable, because we could, we could change the boundaries. I don't think it's fair to compare Cottage Grove to a, a, a kinda unified school district to other school districts like Sun Prairie, because it's just a totally different type of city. So I think we have to be real careful about making comparisons to other schools, because Cottage Grove, uh, is not like any other districts, it's, it's somewhat unique, so we have to really look at our district and what's best for our district, without trying to compare it to other districts within the county, so that's how I think about it. But I, I really think the 4K to second grade is the best model for learning environments, and this model for the students, the best model for the teachers.
Got anybody else first? No, okay.
I, I just, guys, don't, um, I forget what, the percentage of our kids that do go to 4K is pretty high, isn't it like 85 to 90 something? So, so there's a significant number of 4K, it's pretty high.
But only about half of those are in our building.
Well, 'cause they're half-day, so they're only in the building half-day, so you have two groups of kids. Um, the other thing that I've always wondered, 'cause I know when we talk about this, I always picture in my head that, that Taylor, if Taylor Prairie were 4K2, for example, it'd be mostly those kids in houses right around that school, but I don't know, I don't have any idea what the numbers are and how that shakes out. Have you guys ever kinda thought about where you might draw a boundary line if we did do that?
So we would be able to have, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident to say this tonight, that, by August 8th, we could have some at least ideas. Not that we wouldn't be able to say this is the number, we can show you how many houses and sort of shade in an area of what it potentially looks like.
Well, whether it would go across Main Street and take in another area as well, or how, I also, I can't picture how big it would be, 'cause I know a lot of the younger families are kinda in that area, but, and maybe.
Yeah, at least give you a snapshot of working through that process.
To see how, 'cause then, you know, people are portraying that, well, the line goes right down the street, that's pretty problematic, so.
Just a show of hands, who would support the transition model over the 4K2 model, I wanna see who's sort of.
How about?
The transition model is 4KK, first, second, and then 35.
Okay, and we'll count, yes, right, and I'm gonna count Dean and Andrew and Susan.
I am probably leaning on that.
On the fence, and Jeff, we know how he feels, and I'm on the fence too.
I'm still a little bit on the fence.
The reason, I, I think, you know, being that I live out in Cottage Grove, I think it'd be like that, because it, we go into some type of territory where if you're gonna try to do boundaries, and the families, you know, we, 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 we have houses selling, we have, um, a lot of, you know, we have a lot of transitions, so then, every year you're gonna see, you're gonna try to find out, well, where's all the 4KK kids living this year? Because it might be a switch, then we have to change boundaries again and stuff. Well, the transition, I think, it'd be so much easier, and then the kids can actually feel that they're growing up, going to another school, and they're growing up again, going to third, fifth, then they're going to middle school, and, you know, and I just, I wanna keep all those kids together transitioning to each, you know, it's, it's almost like going up into a level. But breaking them up into 4K to two, you know, that, that boundary line is gonna be switching probably every year.
Well, see, that's, that's kinda what I wanted to see, sir, if we had a rough idea of what it'd be, because if, if that's the case, then that is, that's another negative for, for them. I'm not sure.
'Cause I don't think you gotta spend time each year trying to change up the boundaries to make the school, 4K schools even.
Every school board needs an evening of contentious quarreling over where the boundary line goes. If you wanna guarantee a, an exciting meeting, let's start the boundary line.
My, my, uh, I think that's a valid point, Andrew, especially for the city of these in Cottage Grove. I guess I would say Cottage Grove is growing, so eventually, there's gonna be boundary lines. It's gonna, that's, the, the community is, is increasing, and, and the, the model of keeping everybody together is more for a smaller town, and Cottage Grove is not gonna be a smaller town, it's gonna be a larger town, so. I think, like, it, we're right at that point where we start discussing that, you know, we're growing now, we're not gonna be able to have one elementary school to sustain this community, we're gonna have two, so eventually, we're gonna get to the point of discussing the boundary lines, and of course, they're, they're, you know, always a difficult discussion.
And I understand that, but just like our term.
Yeah.
We can look at it every three years.
And it, and you're right, it's hard, it's hard.
Start with something now, and if it doesn't work, we have power to switch it. And that's for, you ask for the community, you know, we do it one, we, we start off with a transition. If the community doesn't feel like that's comfortable, they bring it to the table, we can configure it for the next year, something like that, so we do.
I, I, I think what we're doing is we're, we're making do with a, a school which is small, and is designed for smallness on a very, on a very restricted land.
Especially Taylor Prairie, I can't fit a next.
And, and in effect, uh, the, the size configuration and the design of that school, whoever did it is what, everybody's gonna live with it until the school
Right.
is, is obsolete, and we have to make it work, and it's a perfectly good school as we use it.
You know what, my thoughts, the decisions we have to make, this is one that's, I think, relatively easy. I know there's some cost in design considerations, but it's not that big a deal, if you ask me, if we decide that we've done the wrong thing and wanna change it, or if we wanna, just for whatever reason, change it down the road, yeah, we have to change, reconfigure bathrooms and stuff, the one building and so on, but, it's not something we can't do in a summer for a reasonable cost. It's from what I'm saying, so that part also makes me, because it's easy to undo, there's not a lot of risk of making the wrong decision, it's, it, it's, I don't really have strong feelings either way, um, I, I think, I'm comfortable going either direction with this.
Are you, are you still on the fence?
I'm still on the fence, but again, part of it is because, well, I'm comfortable going either way, because it, like I said, I don't see a big risk, downside risk to, uh, make a wrong decision. However, they're gonna bring us additional information about boundaries and so on, so I think we should defer this one to our next meeting, 'cause I don't, we don't have a consensus right now, and, um, and I think then we can move on. Any last words? Okay, so we've, we've, I think we've made substantial progress here, uh, putting a stake in the ground on everything, but the, ultimately, sort of this balance between athletics and the renovated living spaces and the, um, grade configuration. Which brings us to future meetings. Personnel, next, it's August 6th, next school meeting is the 8th, the, um, and we will have a much more serious discussion about this subject at the 8th, 'cause hopefully, we might be passing the draft questions. I mean, passing questions, it would never be draft.
So.
Do we have a date for policy?
Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's time for it to get on this.
So one of the things I just wanna clarify, we'll, we're gonna have some additional information based on how it was stated tonight, and that will continue, you know, as we talked about the design, you know, for several months, so if you're comfortable, we'll have it on the agenda for possible action of the resolutions. Um, you can still figure out, you know, how that money gets distributed, you know, after the resolution adoption, and then it would be a separate question about the grade configuration, 'cause that's really not part of the referendum, but that is a decision you need to make, and so we'll have a, that is a possible action item as well.
Yeah, I mean, people, I, people, I still wanna know what the, I mean, I, I think, just like we talked about the athletic field, I mean, if we have some moving money.
Well, it affects how we spend our money, from the referendum.
Right, and, and Bob did say there would be, I think if we were gonna do two 4K2s, there would be some.
A little bit, yeah.
You know, we have had, we had two second grade classrooms at Taylor Prairie.
Well, it's not so many, it's the kindergarten ones are, you know, I think you can go one way.
The kindergarten ones have to be bigger, right? That's right.
Yeah, if it's already a kindergarten room, you can use for second grade, but not the other way around.
The other way around, right.
Yeah, so much, I mean, it's less, less desirable, it's got to be.
I hope, hopefully, when we're done, we have all six board members, if not, assenting support for whatever we come up with.
All right, um, I like motion reconvening closed session for agenda item C for completion and consideration of a new grade in subjects of business.
Motion to reconvene closed session, agenda item C.
Just say, so moved, but yes, it's moved and seconded, uh, all the papers starting, I'm sorry, uh, roll call vote, starting with Dean.
Ready? Yes.
Aye.
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 Wise guy. All right, we will adjourn from closed session, there won't be any additional open, uh, open session, open meeting tonight.